The following program is the third Tuesday of the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
No, it wasn't your fault, Barb. Not at all. All right, welcome, everybody. Welcome to our regular scheduled City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. I'll call this meeting to order, and as always, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we're going to ask Barb as our clerk to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
All right, and would you also take role of the City Council members?
Brian Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra?
Here.
Lori Chestnut? Paul Hagan?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Scott Porczatski?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Barb. And do you want to introduce yourself and your position with the city?
Barb Nowak, City Clerk.
Aaron Jensen, City Administrator.
Eric Bailey, Library Director. Jared Rayquell, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Reif, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Brian Hozell, Chief of Police.
Thank you. Josh was here, he's our IT guy, and then he hit as soon as we heard we were going to say this. And then Laura Colbert is missing, but she will be here shortly. We had another engagement that was going to last beyond six o'clock. All right, we have a consent agenda that you're seeing. Barb tells me that there's no changes on that consent agenda. Again, remember how we handle this. We take all of the items that are on the consent agenda and vote on those with one motion, unless, tell them so you would like to see one of those items moved to the regular agenda where we would act on that individually. If you do not see anything that you would like to change, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Under the regular agenda, Barb has one item that she needs to talk to us about.
Under New Business 9J, the request for road closures, they were not able to attend, so we're going to take that off the regular agenda.
So we have one change, we'll just go from I to K. Most of us don't know the alphabet that well, anyway. Sorry. Okay, so there's that one change. Anybody would like to make a motion to approve with that one change? No move.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Peterson, that we approve the regular agenda with that one change, deleting 9J. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under number seven, non-agenda items and announcements, we have a fair housing proclamation, and that's Stephanie Reif, our Finance Director, is on board for that. Steph? Eighty-two. I don't know how I know that.
Okay, just read it.
Yeah, please.
Okay. This proclamation is for the fair housing, as the mayor had mentioned. Whereas equal housing opportunity is right guaranteed to all Americans under Title VIII of the 1968 Civil Rights Law, the struggle against discrimination in housing continues, and whereas fair housing is not simply a racial issue and access to affordable housing in the cities and rural areas is a problem for many families, for people young and elderly, white, as well as minorities, and whereas fair housing is consistent with the principle of equality and justice, for all principles once which our nation was founded, all of us need to share in the effort to ensure fair housing is a reality for all Americans, and whereas the state of Wisconsin has recognized the principles of fair housing with the passage of an expanded law which allows the state to assure its citizens of border opportunity and fair housing, and the city of Wapaka has enacted a fair housing ordinance in an effort to promote those same principles, and whereas each year, since the enactment of the National Fair Housing Law, the federal government designates a month as Fair Housing Month, and I am pleased to join in such designation, and now therefore I, or you, Mayor Smith, by virtue of the authority vested in you as mayor, I guess, am I even supposed to say that part, or are you supposed to say that part? I don't know.
Everybody struggles with it.
So confused. Yeah, Fair Housing Month in the city of Wapaka, and acknowledge all positive efforts of our leaders, realtors, landlords, and other professionals, and urge every citizen of the city to practice the letter and spirit of the Fair Housing Law, even as we recognize all noble efforts toward the realization of this human dream and fulfillment of this basic need.
All right, thank you, Stephanie, for that. That's... Appreciate the reading of that proclamation. This is something that we will place on file. Thank you. Next up, we have, as always, during part of our agenda, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items, so if it's an item that's not on the agenda and you'd like to bring something up, talk about it, this is true for the audience or council members or staff. We do ask you to limit your time on that one item to three minutes or less. Do we have anybody that would like to give public input tonight? Dimitri, go ahead.
I had two constituents reach out to me to complain about speeding on High Street and trucks going by with loud exhaust in front of their house. High Street runs from over by South Park, and it's kind of a shortcut for people coming in off of Highway 22 to the south to get through town, and so the thought being that perhaps the speeding issue might be especially bad there from people coming fresh from out of town. Anyway, I had mentioned that I would speak to Chief Hozell, and we spoke briefly before the meeting, but I just wanted to share that that was an item of complaint.
Yeah, thanks, Dimitri. If you remember, that was, I think it was last year, right, Justin, that we improved that road? So it's ready for rubber, that's for sure. Yeah, thank you, and it is kind of a bypass, so thank you for bringing that up and getting it to Chief Hozell. I'm sure he's right on top of it. Thank you. Anybody else that has public input for us? Anything that's happening in the city that you guys are involved in that you want to talk about? Not Department Heads, you're going to get your chance. Any council members? Okay, let's go to Department Head reports, but before we do that, actually, we have Julie Iden is reporting on the Winchester Academy for the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network. And so Julie, if you want to just step up to the podium and get us informed here.
I'll do my best. I'm here representing Winchester Academy. My name is Julie Iden, and I'm a trustee. I'm a trustee with Winchester Academy, and I'm on the marketing committee, so I got this short straw to be here this evening. Winchester Academy is a nonprofit volunteer organization that promotes lifelong learning. Winchester was started in 1973 in Winchester, Wisconsin, but then moved to Wapaka 30 years ago in 1993. We don't have a building or facility that we occupy, so our programs are usually held at the Wapaka Area Public Libraries downstairs, meeting rooms, or various venues around the city depending on the program that we have. We average around 25 programs per year in three different series. We have winter-spring series, we have a summer series, and then we have a fall series. Currently, we're right in the middle of our summer series. We've already had two spectacular programs, and attendance at each one of those programs was over 90 people, which was really good for us now that we're post-pandemic. Please know that our programs are always free, and we encourage all ages to come and learn something new. We try to vary all of our program topics, and we try to vary those topics to reach a wide range of people. Our first project, program this summer was beekeeping and the honey industry from a Wapaka perspective, put on by Kent Pagorsch. Last night, we had John Bates speak about the last wild lakes in Wisconsin, and our next program, next Monday, is going to be entitled Jews and Muslims in Christian America. So you can see there's a wide variety, just in three weeks. We try, excuse me, recently, we've made an effort to coordinate with other organizations and institutions in our community. An example was last April, we had a speaker that came and talked on scams and frauds, and in the afternoon of his Monday program, he went to the high school and talked to students, and then came in the evening and talked to our, mostly adults, attend our programs in the evenings. Coming up this fall, we have a folk musician coming, David Drake, and we're partnering with the Historical Society, the Parks and Recs Department, to bring this performer to Wapaka. And while he's in Wapaka, we're going to be working with the King Veterans Home, and he's going to be performing there, as well as the school district, and he'll be performing at the middle school. So we're really trying to reach out and work with a number of different organizations within the community. In closing, I'd like to extend an open invitation to everyone here to attend any of our upcoming programs, and also know that the Winchester Academy, being a volunteer board, is right now currently looking for some board members, so if you're interested, give us a contact. And information about Winchester, more information than I have here, can be found on our website, winchesterwapaka.org, or our Facebook group. Any questions?
Yeah, Julie, thank you very much. It's a nice activity that we have in our community. It's been really well received throughout the community, so thank you for giving us that update.
Thank you.
All right. We have a long night tonight, so I did ask the Department Heads to hit the high notes as we go through this tonight, so we're going to start with the library. Eric, you would?
All right, I'll do my best to keep her quick. Quick plug for the Winchester programs, they really do a fantastic job. If you've never been to one, highly encourage you, they bring in fantastic speakers. For the report this evening, it starts on page four of your packet. The new Hidden Prairie exhibit is up in the exhibit room. It is both beautiful and informative. It's an exhibit centered around photographs and science on a one-square-yard space of prairie. We're doing a lot of programming around it as well. I encourage everybody to take a look. Happy to report that our new State Park Pass program this summer is off to a really good start, that we've had a lot of interest in that beyond what we had expected. Basically, this is a new DNR program. Libraries across the state can purchase passes for $5 apiece and then make those available freely to community members, and then they can take those to a state park and get in for free. So been very popular so far. And I'll close by reporting that we are going through our regular annual computer replacement. We replace a certain number of electronic laptops, desktops, et cetera, every year. This year, we're looking at our public-use computers, and we're replacing the three desktops that are in the dedicated catalog desktops, the table that's out in the middle of the floor. But the public-use computers that are up against the wall on the laptop bar, we are not going to be replacing with desktops. We're instead going to be making the decision to replace them with laptops, which will be available at the main desk that can be checked out. And with that being the case, then if somebody brings in their own laptop or if they want to use that space for something else entirely, they've got that option because it will no longer be taken up at all times with desktops. So it's basically offering a little bit more flexibility that the space doesn't always have to be taken up with a computer, even when the computer's not being used. So on that note, I will turn things over to Jared, I suppose you're up next.
Yeah, so we continue with our downtown partnership group. It's been a really, really great opportunity to talk with downtown business owners about their concerns, wants, desires for the downtown. I think a lot of great conversations have ensued in that meeting, or those multiple meetings, so really glad to continue those and really hope we can get additional participation and input from the downtown businesses. The Economic Diversity and Resiliency Strategy that we've been working on for the past year and a half or so, we do hope to have that completed here in the coming months. The deconstruction of the old St. Mary's does continue. I'm sure as you see pictures on Facebook, thank you to Josh, by the way, for taking those awesome drone shots and putting those on Facebook. Those have been absolutely wonderful to see, you know, both positive and negative comments, but it's been really great to document the process, so we'll always have those for historical records. Did get a notice from QuickTrip. Council did approve a conditional use for a diesel pump expansion recently. They did say they had to put that project on hold for 2023 and hope to get to it in 2024. So won't be seeing any work out there anytime in the near future, I guess, but hopefully in the future. Wayfinding and relogoing continues, and then the reevaluation continues as well. Bomar did notify us, and we did put it out on Facebook and in the city water bill, that they would have additional staff out and about trying to get that reevaluation wrapped up here in the coming months. So as mentioned, did post that and try to get it out there as much as we possibly could.
Thanks. Jared, speaking of Bomar and doing our reevaluation, it probably would be a good idea for us to get like a timeline of they do the reevaluation, and if there are changes, which you would think the majority of the homes will have some changes, then there are letters that are sent out to the homeowners or to whoever owns taxable buildings. I'm talking, trying to be intelligent here, I'm not sure exactly how it works, but so it would be nice if we could get something from Bomar for the next meeting that just tells us what the timeline is.
Sure.
So the Board of Review actually met, and understand that the Board of Review is the one that if you're questioning what your assessment is in the city, you come in front of the Board of Review, and the Board of Review then acts as a quasi-judiciary system to find out who is more correct. Is it our assessor, or is it the individual that is questioning their assessment? So we might have some of those. Our assessor usually does a pretty good job of weeding those out before they even get to the Board of Review. But so we met just to adjourn to another meeting, and that's going to be in October, so quite a bit later in the year. So you might get questions, especially when the letters come out telling people what their new assessment is on their property. So just fair warning, and if we can get something that tells us the timetable, that would be awesome.
Sure, I could certainly reach out for that.
All right, thanks a lot.
Yeah, and one other comment, I guess, just in case Laura doesn't make it in time. The movie at the airport is this Friday, so hope to see you guys all there.
Yeah, and hopefully Laura does get here to talk about it because she, I mean, there's going to be some food trucks out there, and it sounds like it's really going to be a fun time. And the weather is supposed to be perfect. Of course it is in Wapaka. All right, Stephanie?
Okay, thank you. So just back to the CDBG. While we're happy to close that out, Shelley wanted to recognize that we do have other programs that offer assistance to those in need. And to date, the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program has subsidized over $26,000 in utility billing assistance for Wapaka residents, so it's kind of cool to touch on, so I wanted to bring that up. Last month, Kate had a rep from Theta Care at work come in and do some training on respect, diversity, and harassment, and I think that went really well, and I just wanted to let everybody know that we are doing some interesting HR trainings, and we continue to look at more opportunities moving forward, just to keep us up to date on policies and rules. And then lastly, Aaron and I have been meeting with Department Heads to go over pre-budget exercises with everybody, just giving them an opportunity to look at priorities and start thinking about 2024 budget process, and I think that's been going over really well, so that's it.
Stephanie, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments for Steph? All right, let's move over to Public Works. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor, excuse me. Report is in the packet, page 21 through 24. Wastewater Department, we are continuing our facility management plan. We actually have our second meeting on that tomorrow, Jesse and I do. We'll have one more meeting in July with Strain and Associates, put the finishing touches up, and then they will be back. We're targeting one of the meetings in August to present that plan to council. Streetside, the street department, this is not on their list, but we are advertising our open position, so we have a laborer position open on the street department right now with the shifting of personnel, retirement, starting with Russ Montgomery. Jake filled that role, and now we have two others that filled in the mechanic position, and now we have an opening. So that is out on the streets and being advertised. We'll be accepting those for quite a while and hopefully make a hire here in a couple months. We did remark and reseal the parking lot by the splash pad, so that was one we left off the, I guess, maintenance list last year, but we took care of it this year after the majority of the construction was finished, so it wasn't marred up our brand-new work. Since I mentioned splash pad and Laura's not here, we did have a meeting out there today, we got an update. The plumber was on site and got that work done. Folks will continue with some topsoil work pretty soon and try and tie that up. We did not hear a schedule, and hopefully Laura could update us if she shows up because we had some more work to do on the actual pieces on the splash pad and when those be installed, but last I knew that was going to start like next week. Water Utility, we did a round of, another round of PFA testing. That was per our sampling requirements. The results we got back were similar to the ones we had before, which we feel is pretty low. So right now, the DNR has a, it's not really a regulation, but they're setting a standard of 70 nanograms per liter, which is very low. We're well below that. However, EPA is working on some additional guidance, which may be adopted January of '24. If that takes into effect, the regulation may be as low as three nanograms per liter, which is extremely low, and then we'd be very close to that limit. So it kind of gives you an idea of where we're at. We're monitoring it, we have some ideas on how to correct it, so we are ready to take action if need be. Facility side, a unique thing that for Jake, his first go-around, we had the railroad spur inspection. Our spur is in good shape. That is done with CN Railroad, they send a representative. They usually walk some of the private rail lines out there, and there's a few corrections that need to be made, but nothing major. These solar projects, so if you saw up on the roof, we do have solar panels installed. They're not operational, so the peaked part is nearly complete. They started on the flat roof section, which should take them through the rest of the week for sure. And then after that, we'll be looking at finalizing the project with electrical and then finally getting the battery packs installed just across the hall here in the basement. Public Works facility is clipping right along. We're really good on our schedule, and if you've been over there recently, you'll see some concrete panels are in the air. So the repair garage is a concrete panel. It comes already pre-ported. They just stand it up, weld it together, and it's there. One panel per hour is about what they're doing, but it's kind of fascinating how quickly they do move with those things. There's going to be additional concrete work here in the next couple of weeks. The metal building should arrive maybe in a few weeks, but we're right on schedule with that. The last meeting, we had two street department staff here, so Brogan and Zach. Brogan was not on the report. He's on this week because he's actually, his anniversary was in June. But the one guy that was not on there, Jesse Landry, in our wastewater department, started as an operator, worked his way up. He's now our superintendent, and he's been here 17 years, so he's one of the old guys now, so the rest is informational.
Thanks, Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments for Justin? Let's go over to the Police Department. Chief, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. My report can be found on page 27. In the last month, our department handled a total of 793 calls for service. One of the things that we focused in on was some directed patrols. We ended up with 77 traffic stops, resulting in 64 citations, 64 warnings. We also sent 11 criminal cases over to the DA's office. During this month, we did have three officer injuries. One was pretty scary. They were testing some substances, and don't know how it ended up on him, but somehow it did, and there was a reaction where the ambulance ended up at the police department and transported him, but it was just for observation. So he's okay. And the other one was, we were assisting somebody with an overdose, and an officer had fell into a door, so he's all right too. And then the third one, he unfortunately was playing hockey and got taken out. So that was not work-related or anything like that. Skipping to the, our department does directed patrols, and during the month of May and early June, we all know that in the Swan Park area, that the speeds are up a little bit, and what we do is we saturate those areas to try to have a presence and reduce some of the speeds. So we spent a total of 27 and a half hours in that area. We only had six citations and 18 warnings were written in that area. And it was brought up about High Street, so we will be doing the same thing up on High Street. We do have the speed board up there. I shared with older person Martin what the speeds were up there, so we will saturate that area for a period of time and try to get the vehicles to slow down, and we'll be moving someplace else next month. So but those are things that are a priority to the department of trying to get vehicles to reduce speed, so I'll have a report on that next month. And then Paul Jensen just successfully completed his probationary period as of June 6, so he is now off probation. And the last thing I have is, this Friday night, the Lakeman play a game against Nichols Nitros, I believe the team is, at 7:30. The Police Department will be serving pulled pork. I don't know if anybody's had Wes Zuby's pulled pork before, but it's very, very good. He's going to start serving that at 5:30 if anybody's going to be tailgating or beforehand come out, and then what we do with those proceeds is if there's equipment that comes up during the year, or needs that we have, things that weren't budgeted for, we utilize the donation account to assist. um, things that weren't budgeted for, we utilize the donation account to assist us with those, with those funds. That's all that I have.
All right. Thank you, Brian, for the info. Anybody have any questions or comments for Brian? All right, let's, uh, move over to Josh, IT.
Um, past month and a half, I've been working on the city website, and I think a week or so ago, launched a refreshed website, somewhat similar look and feel, but just a lot of updates, a lot of work on the backend of it, and I'm just trying to catch those things that don't normally get looked at. We're going to be installing some security cameras soon by the splash pad at Swan Park, all that equipment's been ordered, and we'll be getting that up in the next couple of weeks. Um, working on final touches of an RFP with Justin to get, uh, network connectivity to the new Public Works building, whether it's towers or fiber or some other method, we're going to uh, put something out with vendors to have various options to propose and see what pricing and the different options look like and, uh, suggest something from there, so I don't know, I think sometime in August, maybe in that timeframe, having it due and figuring it out. Well, PAC Online has been upgrading some of our backhaul links, those connect one tower to another to send internet through. The new ones we're putting in are quite expensive, some of them are covered by state grant dollars, some of them are covered by our budget, and then the town of Caledonia is providing some funds for us to use in upgrading internet in their town. Um, so it's a mix of who's paying for it, but it's at least quadrupling the speed we can get from point A to point B, and I want to say we're working on like six of these links right now, and I think probably by early August, everything will be operational on that. And that's my main stuff.
Thanks, Josh. Any comments, questions? You, you know, this morning you touched on the downtown speakers, you want to just touch on that?
Okay, um, we've been struggling with the downtown speakers, there's a lot of noise and a lot of interference, just, you know, pack all those people and businesses into a small area, um, electric meters, water meters, other devices operate on all this wireless stuff, so we've been having issues, so we went back to the company that put together the system, did some testing, gathered some data on the, the noise and interference downtown, and um, they suggested some stronger antennas, we put those in to help, made some other configuration changes, and we did that on Monday. Most of it looks to be in a lot better shape than it was, we're still noticing maybe some potential issue on South Main near the post office and Simpsons that we just got to let that play out and see if it is an issue or if it's working fine, we're kind of on the border about that, and then we purchased a couple more speakers to put out front on the square, I think that was part of that grant, uh, for refreshing the square. Um, those were installed last week, so those are pointed kind of both directions off the gazebo out there. So, I'm sure some of you probably heard, heard either yourself or complaints of some weird noises or other oddities with the speakers, that was just all this noise and interference downtown, and we'll, we'll see how it goes, we made some good progress this week, and we'll see if that solved it or if we need to do more tweaking. Yet, but looks a lot better than it was.
Thanks, Josh. Appreciate it. Barb, do you want to go next?
Thanks, Mayor. My report's on page thirty-four. Um, we've been busy with the license renewals. They're not on my report this month because they were actually for June, um, so you'll see that next month. Um, as the mayor said, we had the board of review to, um, reconvene in October when the revow is complete, and it's about it, just getting the new meetings all figured out and in the book, so we should have the official directory done soon after tonight's meeting, I think that's the last, um, approval for one of the members. So I'll be getting that out, um, hopefully within the next week or two.
All right. Thanks, Barb. Any questions for Barb? So, uh, Laura's here, but I think we'll go to you, Aaron, first, and then let Laura go last here.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, my report was uploaded to the website on Friday, you can find it on there. I'll hit on a couple of things that are coming up, uh, rather than going backwards. Um, just a reminder, upcoming strategic plan retreats, July eleventh, one to four, and July twelfth, nine to noon. It's going to be located at four fifteen School Street, which is the office Justin's in right now, formerly known as the, uh, eight downtown, uh, health and fitness headquarters location. So look, really look forward to those conversations with city council and department heads. Leading up to that, uh, Josh has been, uh, super helpful in, uh, creating a public feedback survey, just to kind of see where we're at, what is the perceptions out there, where can we improve, uh, what are we doing well? Um, so we'll be reviewing the results of that during our retreats. Wanted to just thank all of the committee members for the new committees, so we've had three new committee meetings now, public engagement, water and sewer board, and then, uh, personnel committee. Um, personnel was today, I thought it was a very productive conversation, look forward to continuing that. And I want to specifically thank Justin and Sue, who are chair, the chair, um, people of both of the other boards. Also want to thank Barb for the extra work, because it is extra work that goes into preparing for these, each of these committees, um, so thank you, Barb, for that. And then the last thing I'll just touch on is, uh, recently found out about this Forward Fund, actually, I got one more thing. Forward Fund, um, it's a, it's a meeting we're going to be having in, at the end of this month, uh, with Sheboygan County's Economic Development Director. It's a, it's a, appears to be a good example of a public-private partnership that has helped spurred, uh, it looks like they're going to construct about fifty-six homes, homes in Sheboygan Falls. Sheboygan Falls is, uh, similar to Opaaca, and there's some similar things in place in that community, uh, that makes it feel like we should have a conversation and learn, see what we can learn from them. Actually, that fifty-six is just a start, I believe their, their plan is to build six hundred units in the next five years. So we hope to learn from that conversation. And then the last thing I'll say is, truly the last thing I'll say, is, uh, shared revenue package, uh, hopefully council members saw my email, uh, there was a shared revenue package that has been agreed upon, and, uh, we are excited about that. It, it does look a little different than the original proposal, but it is improvement, and, uh, we're, we're thankful for everyone who had a hand in, um, in getting to that point. We will go through the details on what that means at our strategic planning commission, or, uh, strategic planning retreats and, and work it into our planning efforts, so. Uh, there is also, as a part of that, an innovation fund, which, uh, so instead of giving all of it to local control, some of it's going to be tied up in grant dollars that will go towards efficient, uh, communities that are efficiently providing services. What that means yet exactly is not a hundred percent known, but I do believe collaborative relationships between municipalities and other taxing jurisdictions would be rewarded, so there's a workshop, uh, put on by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities in Alcart Lake, August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. I'll plan to attend that, and hopefully we have a whole bunch of information from that. Any questions?
Thanks, Aaron.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, so let's go to Parks and Rec. Laura, you've got a lot of things going on, so.
I'll try to keep it short. All right, so Splash Pad is, um, very near its, um, its, its end, if you will. Um, it's looking incredible, we've got, um, the concrete done, the playground done, the building is in place, the electrical and plumbing is getting connected and closing up all those loose ends. Um, hopefully the splash pad will be, um, the elements will go up this week yet, and then the concrete will be remedied next week. And we're still waiting on a, on a hard and fast date on the concrete, and once we know that, we can, we can very, um, confidently put out a grand opening date, and so I was hoping to have that date for you today. Um, but hopefully tomorrow, now I'll get it, and then we can, we can move forward with the grand opening date, which should be, which should be rather quickly, I'm hoping. Well, PAC Area All-Stars, uh, is, is underway and doing great, we just got another grant, um, from Parfiville Church to offset the cost of scholarships, so um, hopefully, uh, becoming a part of this program will not, uh, money will not be a deterrent from becoming a part of this program if interested. Nobody talked about the movie night yet, right?
Kind of, but not real well, so.
Well, buckle up, it's going to be a fun ride, we are showing Maverick, um, or Top Gun Maverick at the airport. Um, we're really trying to have some exciting flyovers, but that might just be a, a pipe dream by me. Um, but it's going to be really great, the movie theater, so I'm, I'm six feet tall, and when I stand with my arms up, I don't even reach the bottom of the screen, and the screen extends another twenty feet above me, so it's rather large, it's going to be incredible, the sound system sounds great. Josh worked really hard on getting an antenna that's going to meet the needs of massive amounts of cars, I don't know if anybody said, we have over seven hundred people interested on Facebook. So we are, um, make hopeful, hoping that the police come around and check things out, doing traffic control, all that fun stuff. Uh, it should be a really good night, we've got, um, a few food carts and vendors coming out, um, to hopefully meet the needs, so if you're hungry beforehand, come out and have a bite to eat, and then enjoy the movie. It's going to be a whopping ninety degrees, so bring a fan.
Never mind, Jared did a better job than you.
All right, touche. Um, so, uh, let's see here, um, we have a new, um, drive going through our cemetery, it's been updated, it's absolutely gorgeous, so if you want to check that out, it is, it is worth a drive, it really cleans up the cemetery, it looks really nice. Um, we had a super successful workday at Brainard's Bridge with our friends of Opaaca Parks and volunteers, and, um, I just want to say that we have rebooted the, um, Friends of Mirror and Shadow Lake group, and it has become a pretty robust group, and there's things happening, and it's, and it's, and it's good. Our next meeting is going to be, uh, July fourteenth, one PM at Lower South Park, so we can actually be by the lake at our next meeting, which should be nice, and, um, yeah, I think that's all I, I need to share at this point in time.
Hey, thanks, Laura. Anybody have any questions or comments? Paul, go ahead.
Um, and I've, I've asked about this before, but I was out at Brainard's Bridge, and I did notice erosion on, on the banks and, and the island, and I was just wondering, um, what the status of that is, or if anything is going to be done to mitigate that.
Great question, and in fact, something already is in motion for that. So the DNR is, um, putting us on their list of projects for either late this fall or early next spring, and they have money set aside, and we'll have to match a little bit of that money. Um, so it's shoreline restoration, um, erosion control, and trout habitat that, that we're going for on that, so hopefully that will be restored within the year.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Anybody else? Questions, comments? All right, uh, thank you, Laura. Let's move on to, uh, new business. Uh, starting with, uh, a request for an extension of professional development agreement for Project One in River North, and this is, uh, with HDG and Cedar Prize, and I'm going to just have Aaron, uh, give you the, give you the story here, and, and we do have representatives, you know, that are going to also speak to you tonight on this, so. Aaron, you want to start by introducing them, and?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks Steve and Joe, uh, for coming, and they'll tell you, um, all about the project and where we're at, but just to set it up as a reminder, this is a project for, um, you'll see it's called Area One in our development agreement, we've kind of been talking, or Area Three, we've been talking about it as Area One within River North, and this is the project that we hope is the catalyst for helping support some of the infrastructure and such for the single-family and other types of housing. Uh, it's on thirteen acres south of Godfrey Drive, and right now it's slated to be a hundred and twenty apartment units. And right now, uh, HDG is coming forward with this request, uh, as there has been a delay in some financing, um, in obtaining financing, uh, and that'll be my segue, I won't speak anymore because they'll be able to do that better, so Steve, go ahead.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you. Um, thank you, Aaron, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members, department heads, thanks for carving out a little time for us tonight, good to see you all again. So as Aaron said, we are basically requesting that the council consider an extension of our project development agreement that was, um, that is set to expire at the end of this month, June thirtieth. Uh, we are seeking another six months of that to get us to the end of the year, December thirty-first, twenty-three. To, to kind of maybe go back a little bit further, um, and maybe expand on what Aaron just said. Yeah, a hundred and twenty units, this is an eighty-twenty, uh, model, eighty percent, eighty percent of the units will be market rate, twenty percent will be affordable. Uh, ninety, ninety-six of them, ninety-six of these are market rate of twenty-four, uh, are affordable, so, and they're one and two, three bedroom units, two-story walk-up style. So, now you're going to, you're, you're asking, why am I here, why are we asking for this extension? And, um, with that, I would basically say that we've all seen and experienced, uh, the recent financial turmoil over the past months, including several interest rate hikes, uh, which has delayed our financing. We couple this with the usual IRS and H, and H, and HUD guidelines that have just recently been revised, which has also affected, uh, some of what we were looking for as far as our, our construction budget, our financial per forma, as well as our financing, um, that were all affected. Uh, the, the one thing I would say, though, is that, um, our investor and our, our, um, financing conversations are progressing well. We've seen that the, um, the markets and, and some of the, uh, banking situations that have crippled us a little bit in the past are, are starting, starting to, uh, release, and, uh, and things are actually going pretty well as far as the discussions are concerned to get financing for this project. Um, extending the project development agreement allows us to continue, uh, our discussions with financing and our investors, so that we can inevitably, uh, start construction, design and construction once we close on financing. Uh, the second last bullet on the slide there says, we, we hope to close financing on or by January, or excuse me, December thirty-first of this year. And one note I did want to add here at the bottom is that our incentive, or the incentive coming to us in the form of TIF for this project from the city, uh, will not be changing moving forward. So, moving forward from that, on the next page, I just wanted to quickly go over some of the milestones for this, and these are the revised ones from when, when we talked last, uh, September. First one is, uh, we have to establish and will be establishing a, a new co and/or owner uh, by September first of this year, so in a couple of months. We'll plan to close, as I mentioned, close on financing, uh, mid-December, and then we'll go into design bidding and permitting of the project, that'll actually back up starting in October of this year, taking us through April of twenty-twenty-four, then we start construction in April of twenty-four. We'll reach, just like our, our PDA, our previous PDA said, we, we plan to be done sixty percent by December thirty-first of twenty-four, and then, uh, the completion of the rest of the buildings, there are four buildings altogether, not including the garages, uh, but we'll have a phased project completion, and the first building that we plan to have complete will be in quarter one of twenty-twenty-five, finishing up the balance of the buildings by quarter three of twenty-five. So our hope is that, uh, the council is, uh, would consider extending the project development agreement to the end of the year, so we can, uh, continue talking with our investors and bring this project on board. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve. Uh, Aaron, do you want to just touch on what, uh, what staff has been doing with HDG over the last few months? Why we think this is a good fit for the city of Opaaca?
Yeah, so, um, staff has been meeting, and when I say staff, I mean our development review team, um, probably on an average of, well, lately more than monthly, I would say maybe twice a month, um, and before that, probably monthly for the last several months. Um, HDG has provided us updates throughout the process, um, and we have known for a little bit of time here that this financing, um, was going to be a challenge on hitting these dates. I will say that in speaking with others in the same industry, this is not a, not a challenge that's necessarily unique to HDG at this time, it's a challenge that many, uh, developers are seeing, um, because of some of the things that Steve has mentioned. Really, Steve mentioned it in, in his presentation, the TIF incentive does not change, uh, from the city's standpoint. The only other thing that does change in that agreement, besides the dates shifting as, as they've requested, uh, is the city does have some exit lanes at some key moments this fall. And what I mean by that is there are some specific dates where HDG and the city will know, hey, we are on track to close financing in December, at the end of December, or we are not on track to close financing, and the- to close financing. And the agreement does allow for there to be exit points if we feel like that is the appropriate time to do so. So other than that, really no changes to the agreement. And we, you know, as staff, obviously are recommending that it does get extended as they're requesting.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve the extension agreement with, for the River North project?
Second.
Motion by Porczatsky, second by Olson, that we approve the extension of the professional development agreement for Project One in River North with HDG slash Cedar Prize. Any, any discussion? If not, Barb will call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Steve for coming. Joe, thank you. Good to see both of you guys in person again. So, nice. Thanks. Good luck. And as we move on here, we also have another development that we're talking about here. And this is the, the First Amendment to Option to Purchase Agreement with MF Housing Partners. And again, we have Tom Loester, I think I'm pronouncing his name right, in the audience. But we'll have Aaron set it up first.
Thanks again, Mayor Smith. On council members, on page 149 of your packet, you'll see a memo that briefly explains this. Again, this is a fairly simple extension. The reason that we set this deadline originally is because we wanted the op, option to expire if they were not awarded the WIDA tax credits. We got the good news that they are, or they have been awarded the WIDA tax credits, and now the train can start moving. So we've extended it to, we're suggesting extending the option to June of 2024, and that date matches the timelines associated with the WIDA process, and just allows us to continue to move forward with MF Housing Partners on this affordable housing project. Again, this is a 45-unit, kind of cottage-style housing project that will be in River North. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Understand what's going on here. Again, a great project for River North. And we're looking forward to that, moving forward with that. All right. If we don't have any questions, we would need a motion to approve this amendment, the option to purchase the property.
Move to approve First Amendment Option to Purchase.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Martin, that we approve this agreement. Any discussion? Barb will call the roll.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have, it's that time of year, we have a request for street closures for a block party. And it's Marcy Reynolds and Ben Warren. I know Marcy is not here tonight, but Ben is here. Hey, Ben, how's it going?
Greetings. Doing well.
There is a letter in your packet. It is on page 156. And there's also a map on page 157. Do you want to add anything or explain?
No, yeah, we're just trying to get to know our neighbors. So we're gonna have a little block party, invite everybody in the nine-block radius that's inside of Badger, Lake, Maine, and State. There's probably about 65 households and a couple apartments. Have a little block party, you know, just get to know our neighbors, let the kids play in the streets, have some fun.
And so the reason that they're here tonight, obviously, is they're gonna request that, or their request is to block off the streets so that they can go into the streets also. And that's, that, that becomes city business when that does happen. And so, I, I don't know, Barb or Aaron, we do have an ordinance that we have to make sure that they understand, and that City Council understands too, that, that, that we'll have something to do with this block party. And so, either one of you wanna, I mean, Barb actually did the research, but...
Go ahead. I don't want to steal your thunder, Barb.
But if she wants Aaron to do it.
You can steal it.
Yeah, there you go. That's what I figured. She likes to be behind-the-scenes person.
So we do, thanks, Barb. We do have an ordinance, a city ordinance, that does prohibit the drinking of alcohol on city streets. I do know in talking with Ben and Marcy that, like, that's not the primary focus. Now, is there going to be probably some alcohol consumed? I would assume there is. You guys just have to know that it has to be on private property. And the games could be set up and all of that stuff in the streets. Like you said, the kids being in the streets, and hopefully safer because they're blocked off. And I know we have talked to, just so council knows, we've talked to Chief Ozell about this. Justin Barron's had a number of questions that were answered by Marcy through email chain, and he was satisfied with those answers from a traffic control standpoint. But did want to bring up that ordinance.
Yeah. And if you're interested, again, this is Barb's work. I'm just taking advantage of her work here. It's ordinance number 10 dot, dot, zero, four. And it just says, on any street, roadway, alley, parking lot, or sidewalk in the city of Opeca, you're not allowed to have drinks in that area. So we're just asking that they stay off of any of those. They obviously, like Aaron said, they can migrate into the street for their other events and stuff like that. So appreciate, appreciate you working with us on that.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me down. Yeah, I think it's gonna be a good time. We're not planning to serve any alcohol, for sure, and we'll encourage people to keep it under control.
Yeah. Sounds good. Be careful by saying "serve." So, do we have, Paul, go ahead.
So this is for people in South State also, you said?
Uh, let's see here.
Or is it just the one side of South State?
Yeah, we're going in, the inside of South State was what we said. Because once you expanded it to the outside of the street, it was, it like almost doubled the number of houses.
Oh, it's too bad, because I'm on the far, on the other side of South State.
But I was even gonna offer you all the help in the world.
Maybe you know what?
If I'm not invited.
If you happen to...
We're gonna go for Eric over there.
Hold on, you guys. I, I get it. I, I was, that's funny, because Paul, it's bringing up a point that it's great that you guys are, are doing this. And it's, and I think Paul's comment is, is that he lives across the street on South State Street. So does Eric. So you have two council members. Hopefully, they still vote for him.
Yeah. Well, you know, if you happen to see the party happening and want to come by, we're definitely welcoming it to everyone. But we're also gonna provide a little bit of food for the people who are coming. And so, we're just thinking about our budgets. We kind of had to limit it. And you're not, you know, we don't want to discriminate against anyone. So we couldn't say, well, here's your invitation, but, eh, sorry. Your neighbor, no.
I think Paul is just being...
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay. I mean, I think it's, it's a cool thing. And, and the mayor's office is recommending that you approve this. And we'll see how it goes if it, this is the first one we've had in a few years. So we'll see how it goes if you approve it, and, and we'll go from there. Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve street closure.
Second.
Motion by Colin, second by Henry, that we approve of the street closure as indicated on the map on page 157, remembering that we have ordinance number 10 dot, zero, four, that does not allow them to have drinks on sidewalks, the boulevards, or, or the streets or alleys. And that, I'm assuming is part of your motion, Colin?
Yes.
Yes.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion? Barb will call the roll?
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Good luck. I hope it, I hope it's a huge success for you and everybody around you. All right. Next up, we have ordinance number 092023. This is a rezoning for Christian Kane Ashby et al., 1126 Ware Street. And this is the first reading of that ordinance. We'll have, Eric, you wouldn't even have to spell this out for me if I could have just called them JR. So we'll have JR handle this for us.
Thank you, Mayor. This one starts on page 158 of your packets. This is a zoning change request. The parcel is on Ware Street. Currently, the parcel is zoned, three different zones. It is zoned I-2 Heavy Industrial, RC Resource Conservation, as well as R-1 Single Family Residential. With the parcel being triple-zoned, they are looking to obviously expand on the house that is currently established on the parcel. And they would like to add a garage, things like that, which per our zoning code, they cannot do that unless it is one consistent zoning district. So they are coming forward to rezone their parcel to strictly R-1 to accommodate the current single-family home that is on the parcel. This request is compliant with the future land use map, which has the parcel as low-density residential. And only Lot 2, there's a CSM on page 160, only Lot 2 is being requested for the rezone. Lot 1 will remain I-2 Heavy Industrial, which is right next to the rest of the Heavy Industrial parcels. So with that, it's really a cleanup, I guess, generally, just to get rid of the triple zone. And staff would recommend it. Plan Commission also recommended approval. First reading, so it'll come back.
Yeah, thank you. Remember, it's first reading, so we'll take that up at our next meeting that we, we do meet. Okay. Thank you, Jared. Next up, we, this is also coming from City Planning Commission. This is a conditional use permit for Peterson Brothers Property LLC at 1407 Royalton Street. And Jared, you're up on this also.
Of course. This one starts on page 164 of your packet. So this request does come from Peterson Automotive on 1407 Royalton Street. They do already operate a car dealership on this parcel, and they are looking to add some electric vehicle charging stations to accommodate the possible new electric fleet that would be coming for them to sell. So with this, they do plan to add a couple Level 2 charging stations, which are permitted in this district. But they also would like to add one Level 3 charging station. So to kind of paint a general picture for you, Level 1 would just be a standard plug-in. Level 2, you see in most residential garages, it has its special adapter, you know, a little bit bigger unit. Level 3, I would relate to like a gas pump. You know, it's pulling a lot more energy. It actually needs its own 480-amp panel. So quite a bit of energy will be being pulled into this charging station. So with that, and this parcel being in the B-3 district, we just want to have it as a conditional use to double-check that everything's gonna work cohesively. In this case, staff has no concerns with this charging station going in. So they recommend it to Plan Commission. Plan Commission did recommend approval to council. This is the first and only reading. So we'll be looking for approval or denial.
All right. So as, as Jared said, Plan Commission has recommended approval of this conditional use permit. So we'd be looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, was it Dimitri?
Yeah.
Yeah. A motion by Dimitri, second by Peterson, that we approve the conditional use permit for Peterson Brothers Properties LLC. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Moving over to an appointment that we have here. This is a mayor's appointment, so I'm actually gonna just turn this right over to our council president, Paul Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor appoints Josie Peterson to the Public Engagement Committee. After hearing the mayor's appointment, I need a motion, a second, to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Olson, second by Peterson, to approve the mayor's appointment of Josie Peterson to the Public Engagement Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Barb is fixing my mistakes here. So let's go back to E, so F has been approved. Thank you, Paul, for handling that. Let's go back to E, and there was a motion by Dimitri and second by Dave, Pete, that we approve that conditional use permit. Conditional use permits require a roll call vote. So we're gonna ask for a roll call vote.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, let's go to G then. Resolution 1545. It's a resolution supporting application to the state of Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant. CDIG is the acronym. And we have the one and only Greg Gromen, our grant writer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I am joined tonight by Tim Drake and Shane Gross-Gritz of, of Empty Barrel Distilling Company and Brookstone Woods. They're developers of this project. So the city of Opeca is supporting their downtown development project at 219-221 North Main Street. This is a property that has been in poor condition for a number of years. They were awarded downtown incentive through the Downtown Incentive Program. In addition to that, the city of Opeca, I'm working, I'm working with them on developing a community development investment grant. As a condition of that grant, we need to submit a resolution through, through council. We've done this in the past. We, last year, applied successfully for funds to help redevelop the property that Mike Beckham owns. I don't know the address off the top of my head, but it's on North Main Street as well. So this would allow us to get, you know, substantial state investment in our downtown restoring historic property and putting it into productive use with, with local business owners who've got a commitment to our downtown area. So I'm looking for a motion to approve this resolution. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to turn it over to Shane and Tim, who can answer your questions about the property.
Thank you, Greg. You know, thanks for that. Anybody have any questions on this? I mean, Shane and Tim are both here. If you have any questions of their proj, if you're nosy and have any questions on the project or anything?
I'll, I'll bite. I'm nosy. I'm having a hard time placing where that particular business is. What was there? And can you go into just a little details to what is going to happen? Please.
So this is Tim Drake.
Sorry about that. Got a bit of a bum back right now. It's hard to get up and down. Now, the businesses are the last two on North Main, right before you get to the Danes Hall. It used to be a pet shop and a computer repair place. And it was both of those places.
Those are, those are empty now, aren't they?
Yeah, pretty much. We've been just kind of taking some, you know, big walls down and stuff like that. But overall, yeah, they're empty.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Well, what, what's your timeframe? And what do you? Well, what, what's your timeframe and what do you?
Well, we pretty much got everybody queued up to start August first, and before then we, uh, as soon as we get approval from the state, which we're hoping will be in about ten days to two weeks. Is that all right? Uh, we have the asbestos guy coming in to remove all that, clean it up good. Uh, there's, unfortunately, most of these buildings, I think, maybe have a problem. This one had it in the floor, so we actually got off easy, to be honest. We didn't have it in the walls or anything. Uh, but we're, we're shooting, quite honestly, to be, uh, have a soft opening in February of twenty-four. So, and we'll be building it out in stages. The first floor will be distilling and, uh, uh, tasting room, and then the second floor later will probably be put in a lift as opposed to an elevator, and that'll be for, uh, you know, special u, special groups or overflow, that sort of.
I look forward to visiting it next year.
Oh, we, we look forward to having you. Does anyone have any other question?
To be brutally honest, yeah. Henry, go ahead.
Well, the distillery requires state or federal permits?
Yes, we actually, uh, felt we were a little out of our depth there. We have brought in consultants for that, who have done helped other distilleries in the state. That can walk us through and, yeah, we didn't wanna, we, we didn't wanna mess this up.
You couldn't Google it?
My attention span's not that good. Way too many words.
So this is just the first step, and, and Greg has been able to help them through this process. This is a very important part of that process, so we appreciate that, and we appreciate that you guys are making improvements to the downtown, so.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Uh, again, uh, the mayor's office and city staff is recommending that we approve this. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll move to approve. Resolution fifteen forty-five.
Go ahead.
Yeah, a motion by Peterson, second by Henry.
Yep.
Velicker, that we approve, uh, resolution number fifteen forty-five. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Tim. Good luck, Shane. Good luck to you. Thanks for all your words tonight, Shane. Uh, next up, uh, nobody appreciates my, uh, next up, resolution number fifteen forty-six. This is a resolution supporting the Opaaca Farm Market by acting as the fiscal sponsor for their, uh, twenty twenty-three Fox Valley Region Community Foundation Grant Application. And Aaron's been very involved in the farm market this year, so he's the one to talk to about this.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Uh, you'll see the resolution on page one seventy-four of your packet, council members. Uh, this is just simply a resolution allowing them to, uh, apply, uh, for this community, Fox Valley Region Community Foundation Grant. Without it, uh, they are not eligible. They, as you know through, uh, previous reports, they are moving towards that official IRS nonprofit status. Um, before, they would've used, uh, the Living the Opaac Away, uh, under their nonprofit, but the vote that kind of started this whole, uh, transition and mo, motion was to not have them under Living the Opaac Away anymore and have them kind of grow their own wings and fly. So we're helping them until they get there. Um, and again, really, uh, no extra work on our end, just, uh, we do need a resolution saying that council would support acting as their fiscal agent. That seven thousand dollars would go towards wages for the farm market coordinator.
Good. Pretty clean. Uh, anybody would like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Dimitri, that we approve, uh, resolution fifteen forty-six, a resolution supporting the Opaac Farm Market by acting as their fiscal sponsor for a twenty twenty-three Fox Valley Region Community Foundation Grant. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Next up, uh, request for city st, street closures for the August eighteenth and nineteenth for the twenty twenty-three Opaac Area Triathlon. Aaron, you're back up again.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. Uh, this is on page one seventy-five of your packet, council members. This is the same memo you've seen for the last three or four years, uh, just with the dates changed. Um, you can see the dates on, Henry knows what I'm talking about. Um, Henry's, uh, the president of our Opaac Area Triathlon as well, so Henry, if you want to say anything about the event, feel free. Um, but this is, this year, it's August eighteenth and August nineteenth. Um, kids' triathlon on Friday night, as always, Saturday morning with the, um, regular full triathlon, and, uh, we're looking forward to hopefully another very, very successful event. So we would just need, uh, official council action to, uh, close the streets as outlined.
Good. Anybody have any questions? Anybody would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the street closure as, as listed.
Motion by Colin Dykstra, second by Dave Peterson, that we approve of the street closures for the Opaac Area Triathlon on August eighteenth and nineteenth. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
You know, I should probably abstain, 'cause I'm directly involved on, with the triathlon.
All right.
Abstain.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Karen, thank you. Barb, thank you. Uh, next up is, uh, license report number sixteen twenty-seven. This is Class B intoxicating liquor licenses and Class B fermented malt beverages license and Class B fermented malt beverage license and Class C wine license. And, uh, you can see that list on page one seventy-eight of the packet. Uh, we saw a lot of them at the last meeting, and, uh, I'm, I'm thinking this is gotta be it, uh, 'cause it, it has to be done by June thirtieth. So we should be all set with these. These are, of course, uh, pending, uh, inspections by the police chief, the fire chief, the building inspector, and the health inspector. So as soon as, uh, if there are any issues with those, we'll certainly let you know, but we would ask that you approve this license report, uh, pending all of those inspections. Anybody want to make that motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Velicker, that we approve license report sixteen twenty-seven. Any discussion? Um, all in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no.
Mayor abstain.
And Paul Mayo is abstaining. He is, uh, a partner in T-Dubs, Bob Incorporated, so he'll see needs to abstain. Okay? Uh, motion carried. All right, uh, next up, we have, uh, license report number sixteen twenty-eight. This is the arcade amusement device licenses, page one seventy-nine. These always go along with our liquor license reports, too. You can see the businesses that, uh, have arcade and amusement device licenses. Um, we would be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dave Peterson, second by Scott Porczatski, that we approve license report number sixteen twenty-eight. Any discussion? Uh, if not, all in favor, signified by saying aye?
Can we have a roll call vote, can we? Please.
No. Yeah, you could. Absolutely. You're right. Uh, Barbara will take the roll when she's ready.
Paul Hagan?
No.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Paul Mayo? Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
No.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
No.
Six ayes, three noes, motion carried.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, license report number sixteen twenty-nine. This is operator's license, and again, I always explain this, but these are, uh, really, uh, as we understand, a bartender's license. So again, they have to, uh, go through a background check and make sure that they don't owe any monies to the, to the city of Opaac, and fines and so forth. And so that would be part of the motion, quite honestly. They need to go through that. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dave Peterson, second by Colin Dykstra, that we approve license report number sixteen twenty-nine. This is an operator's license. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next up, next up, license report number sixteen thirty, scrap dealer licenses on page one eighty-one. I'm trying to make it exciting for you guys. We have one, Copper Connection Incorporated, uh, is, wants to do business in the city of Opaac. We would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Eric Olson, second by Dave Peterson, that we approve, uh, license report sixteen thirty, uh, scrap dealers licenses. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. Uh, next up, uh, we have, uh, we actually have two items under the, uh, issues, projects, discussion. Uh, the first one is a presentation, uh, by Jeffrey Brown, uh, for ClearPath Energy on a potential for solar development in the city of Opaac, and so, uh, Jeffrey, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. Appreciate your time tonight. Um, this has been a pretty busy night, pretty informative, so I'll keep it, uh, I'll keep it light. I'll keep it high level. Um, is there a presentation, um, there we go, perfect. So yes.
So this is also in your packet, everybody? So if you're having a hard time seeing it on the screen, you can look at your screen in front of you.
So I run a firm called Terra Focus, based out of Madison. Um, we are impact advisors, developers, and investors. We work on developing infrastructure and climate strategies for the, both the benefit of, uh, economic development as well as climate positive outcomes. Uh, here in the state of Wisconsin, ClearPath Energy is a client of mine around the development of what we call a, a P-three program, and that P-three program works with municipalities in a private-public partnership, where we try to identify opportunities, working with municipal lands, to come up with strategies around future, uh, energy and infrastructure investments. Can you go to the next slide, please? So in some due diligence here, we've identified that your city has a couple of very interesting sites. Uh, the first one to us was the landfill, closed landfill on the north part of the city. When I first moved to Wisconsin two and a half years ago from New York, uh, I quickly realized in my first utility bill that the city, or the state of Wisconsin pays some pretty high utility rates. Um, I don't need to tell you that. Um, it is a heavily regulated utility state. Actually, it's probably the toughest utility state in America to do business in. Um, but that doesn't have to be the case, and so much so that at the Capitol right now, you have legislators on both sides of the aisle that have proposed a community solar legislation. Now, community solar, if you're unaware, is projects developed to be anywhere between five to seven and a half megawatts, uh, in size, can be smaller, but typically they're five to seven and a half megawatts. And what they do is they'll develop projects on twenty-five to thirty acres with that power to be interconnected to the local distribution grid. That local distribution grid can carry the power to residents, commercial businesses, industry members. These are not large-scale, multi-thousand-acre utility-scale projects that serve maybe one transmission line and serve power to We Energies facility or to a different part of the state. This is in your backyard. It was designed, let's say, the legislation was designed with the idea of freedom of energy choice for Wisconsin residents, businesses, uh, and prospective Wisconsin residents and businesses to come in and buy clean power at a lower cost. So our goal here in looking at the, uh, first landfill site was to identify a strategy to say, this is a site that isn't currently generating any new revenue, uh, it is an operating cost. We can build a solar project on top of it. We've done it in the past on landfills. We know how to do this. Uh, we can do this in partnership with the DNR. So when I first moved into the state and identified this opportunity, I reached out to the DNR first, and I said, what are your thoughts on developing clean energy projects on landfills across the state? 'Cause Wisconsin has many landfills adjacent to many downtowns. And they said, this is great. We are in the process of developing a redevelopment program specifically to work with people such as yourself and municipalities to take advantage of federal grant money, state grant money, to develop clean energy projects on closed landfills. So this whole project will be in concert with the DNR, with their support, the local DNR engineer, well, regional DNR engineer, and the state offices as well. If you go to the next slide, please. So why does the landfill project make sense? Zero project visa visibility. Um, as someone who's worked on large-scale and small-scale clean energy projects across the U.S., the first thing that you get in raucous town halls are, we don't want to see solar projects. We don't want to see wind farm projects. And again, that's an aesthetic choice, but in this case, uh, this project would be so far tucked away from the road, most people won't even know it exists. Another great thing about this project is its distance to a substation. The further that you have to carry power from the generation site to, let's say, the consumption site, you lose an efficiency. So being less than a mile from a substation actually makes a lot of sense. It is close to downtown, which means the power then would be distributed to downtown businesses and residents, and it is a project that would provide a model of municipal leadership between the city itself and the state DNR. Next slide, please. Now, sitting down with the public works team, Justin and Jared, which I appreciate them, they're a great, great duo to work with, uh, they had identified that there was another city-owned site, uh, Crystal Road, and I believe it's County Highway, uh, let me see here, E. And the idea here was to, uh, just generate a, a rough sketch of how many megawatts could be developed, developed on this site. Um, would it be able to interconnect to the three-phase? From our preliminary analysis, this site would also make a lot of sense, and this site could also generate power for not only downtown, but maybe for the industrial park and the foundry as a potential user of this clean energy. Next slide, please. Reasons that the farmland project, uh, seems to make sense, proximity to the three-phase, again, we're pretty close to the downtown, and it seems to be, uh, a, a land package right now that is not being utilized for more than, I think, grassland growing at this moment. So for the city, what does this mean? We would look to engage in a long-term lease, it's a twenty-five-year lease. We'll have a five-year option period as we go through legislation, go through project due diligence permitting. Uh, we would look to pay the city a thousand dollars per acre of effective land that we would be utilizing. We would also look to pay the city in a long-term pilot agreement tax revenue, uh, that would run concurrently with the twenty-five-year lease. We won't build a project in the state of Wisconsin unless we can deliver power to community members at a ten percent discount to the current market prices. This is why we build the projects that we do, and we do that at the beginning of our process, when we finance our projects, to make sure that we'll be always able to provide a minimum of a ten percent discount. The last piece here on the slide that why it might make sense for the city, it's interesting. Three years ago, I started developing clean energy projects in Kentucky, and people were like, you're wanting to develop large-scale solar in the heart of coal country? You must be insane. And I said, no, I'm not insane. I actually have thirty-six billion reasons why. And those thirty-six billion reasons were due to the fact that there was direct investment outside of the state of Kentucky into Kentucky because it had great labor, great resources, and great logistics. Each one of those companies, Toyota, Ford, Boeing, FedEx, et cetera, all developed projects in Kentucky, and they said to Kentucky utilities and regulators, we are not allowed to buy coal-fired power. Our shareholders will not allow it. It's not a focus of ours. We want a clean power. So that's incentivized the state to be one of the fastest-growing clean energy states in America. We believe that this program, working with municipalities, will give a municipality a little bit of an economic development lever in regards to being an attraction for someone who wants to develop an industrial site in your space. When you say that you can provide them with two megawatts of clean power, or three megawatts of clean power that comes from a public-related energy project, it's attractive for them, not only from their ESG shareholder standpoint, but also due to the fact that they also want to procure clean power at a discounted rate. Next slide, please. So how does this process work? Option, uh, would be an option agreement, which the next step for us would be to share a proposed option agreement with the city attorney for their review. There's a couple of pathways that need to take place. Number one would be a traditional due diligence. We would spend thousands of dollars on site assessments, ALTA surveys, environmental studies, just to make sure that the closed landfill itself is going to be applicable for a clean energy project. Running in parallel, you're going to have the legislation that's going to be taking place at the Capitol, and we expect that that process is going to take anywhere between twelve to eighteen months. The current legislation does have bipartisan support. The authors of the legislation are on the more conservative side of the aisle, and this is a strong environmental message, so there's support from the, uh, the Democrats as well. So if the project gets permitted and we're able to sell the power, how long does it take to build the project? Typically, it will take about six to twelve months to build one of these projects. We'll employ as much local labor as possible, and we will drill for the domestic content ITC tax credit, which means we will try to procure as much US-made product as possible. All the solar panels that will be built, or buying, will be built from a facility in Minnesota called Helene. After the project is turned on, the city then, uh, is able to take, uh, advantage of the twenty-five-year lease, and then we would pay a thousand dollars per acre on an annualized basis to the city for the area that is being leased. During the construction period, our construction team, our construction team will provide a construction bond, and when we turn on the facility, we'll make sure that we have a decommissioning bond in place. Most municipalities are concerned that if something happens to the project, or us as the developer during this time period, who's going to come take care of the panels? The decommissioning bond covers all costs, and we'll be glad to share any references and other decommissioning bonds that we've used in the past as example. Next slide, please. So again, a model of municipal leadership. If anything I've learned traveling across Wisconsin is that towns and villages and cities and counties just have all different ways of, uh, of running their municipality. And one of the reasons I'm pretty excited about working here is, number one, it's a beautiful city. Every time I drive up here, I'm kind of taken back by it. But number two, it's a good opportunity for a growing city in central Wisconsin to provide municipal leadership for the rest of the state. You'd be working in concert with the DNR, as well as we'd have some consultation from the federal EPA. You'd be showing other cities on how they can utilize marginal land base that is currently an expense in turning into a revenue generator, as well as an economic development incentive for outside businesses. Last slide, please. So who's ClearPath Energy? They will be your partner. They will develop the project. We will finance the project. We will build it. We will own it. We will operate it. In the marketplace, you have parties that want to develop, own, and operate. You have developers that want to plant a flag and then sell that contract. We are not in the business of selling contracts. All of the equity that goes into these projects, and these projects would total approximately about ten to twelve million dollars, comes from our own pockets. We would then have to be a partner with the city for years to come. Why does that matter? We build projects right. We know how to build them properly. We know that five years from now, we want a facility that's going to operate with the least amount of expense, so it might cost a little bit more upfront to build properly, but if we do it the right way, we have less concerns down the road. The team currently has over forty megawatts of operating assets. We have over a hundred that are currently under development, our community solar programs across the United States, and in addition to that, we have some large-scale projects in other parts of the US. So this is just an introduction to the idea. Uh, we've currently signed up multiple communities. I'm not at liberty to say who due to, um, confidentiality, uh, agreements, but, um, this is something that is taking place across the state, and we think that here, your city can be the first one in this region that could do this, and we'd be glad to take any questions, um, have you review the literature, and then if you'd like to move forward, we will send over the city attorney our template, uh, option agreement, and maybe take the next steps. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Henry, go ahead. Well, thank you for being here, presenting. You are not a risk-averse company, it sounds like, because you are willing to plowhead in a very fickle legislative environment in our state, it seems like. So... That just, I guess, can you explain a little bit more? How do you, uh, disengage yourself if the legislation doesn't happen? Because it sounds like if the legislation doesn't occur, then all the financial benefits don't accrue to this project. Is that a fair point?
That's a very fair point. It's a hundred percent risk for us. That's why we'll try to take it slow during the legislative process. That's also why be, excuse me, me being in Madison matters, because I am also technically a lobbyist in the state, because I have to have the ear to the ground on both sides of the aisle to see which way some of these legislative actions take place. And clean energy is one thing that we do here. I'm also working on, uh, land management practices with some forestry operators in the state of Wisconsin, as well as farmers, on soil carbon management to put more money in their pockets. So understanding the future of Wisconsin from a climate perspective and how that marries with an economic perspective is key for us. We believe confidently that the day will come where Wisconsin residents and businesses will have the opportunity to buy the power that they want to buy at a lower, fair price. But we're willing to take the risk between now and the that day comes with our capital, because we believe that there is going to be a legislation pathway, and when there is, there's going to be a huge run on opportunities here in Wisconsin. We do not want to compete with farmers, competing against farmers for solar projects. We want to work municipalities that create models that make sense for leadership. Thanks for your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Colin, go ahead.
Do these sorts of developments prevent future, uh, housing or developments in the area, both locations? E, as you go out of town, there's a couple of subdivisions with larger home, home lots that are built there. It seems like a natural place for Wapaka to expand. The other direction out toward forty-nine is, is one of the other few areas where we're not bumped up to other, other communities who I think would oppose a development going out that direction. So does this prevent us from developing in either direction, housing or, or other things?
It's too hard, it's, it's too hard to tell at this moment, kind of the, like, future projections, but I will say this. We'd be building on a landfill. Most people do not care to see a landfill. In the case of where there are, let's say, view sheds from neighbors, we'd be glad to talk about, and that'll go through the permitting process, putting up, planting trees along fence lines to have struck views. Um, the farm property on the southern side of town, I could see will have more visibility. That's probably going to be a little bit more, let's say, contentious at the, to say the least. But realistically, we, it's not going to limit any future development. If anything, it's going to allow the city to make money on a piece of property for the next twenty-five years, and at the end of that lease agreement, now you have prime property in the middle of a city that's grown over the last two and a half decades, that now has increased value.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Can we, your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to say thank you for coming to our city with this. It seems like, uh, a great badge of honor if we could have something like this started in our community. Uh, it'll be good, uh, for us to be able to promote Wapaka as being on the cutting edge of renewable energy and as being a climate-conscious, uh, community. So, um, I certainly hope that this goes forward. The only, uh, thing I can't seem to figure out is, why would anyone say no to this? This just, it seems like it's great for every perspective.
Well, we are willing to take risks, unlike other developers, and we do that because we have a small shop, and we can't just throw darts at a board. So we come up with smart strategies that tend to make the most sense. Um, building solar in Kentucky, like I said, most people thought I was crazy, but one of my clients was featured in the New York Times about a project they're building on a reclaimed coal mine. We saw a little bit what was to come, and I see the same here in Wisconsin. But I don't want to do it on prime farmland. It's a part of Wisconsin's identity, um, and I don't want to disturb that. What I'd like to do is say, you have a bunch of marginal land that municipalities own, and private businesses too. Let's identify those as the hubs of tomorrow, and if we can do that, everybody wins. Mr. Nagel?
Um, so you, you're proposing a twenty-five-year lease. So what happens at the end of twenty-five years? Is that, is that the lifespan of the panels?
That's a great question. So actually, our lease options will give us the opportunity to extend out to forty years based on the satisfaction of both parties. The panels themselves have a twenty-five-year performance guarantee. Now, when we finance our projects, we put a replacement reserve in, so we feel that maybe ten years down the road, we might want to repower the program, which means there might be, uh, solar panels that are nine hundred watts, which means we'd be able to generate more electricity out of the same racking systems. If you look at what panels used to be, around two hundred and fifty to three hundred watts is, is, like, only five, six years ago. Now they're at five hundred and forty watts. Our panels out of the Minnesota manufacturer are five hundred and forty watts. So we expect the capex for product efficiency to go down. We expect to repower in the future, but that's a hundred percent on us to do.
So, just to follow up. So as the panel had to be replaced, let's say they all last twenty-five years, you would be replacing them at your cost, or would the city be on the hook for replacing some of those?
We are responsible a hundred percent for the project. It's our capital. It's our decommissioning bond. It's your land. Like, that's, that's the expectation.
Henry, go ahead. Through the lease arrangements, does, uh, would Wapaka have any chance to direct how the power is distributed, or is that solely your operational decision?
That's a really good question. That all depends on how the legislation shakes out. As we've seen in other states, um, some states will have a cap on, let's say, one large user. And you have the foundry here, which I think is a very interesting conversation. Realistically, kind of on a high level, we want to be able to make this available for businesses and residential customers, just to be subscribers. So when a project gets launched and we're ready to turn the project on, we open it up for people to start that process. Now, again, depending on the legislation, we don't know if we will be billing those individuals direct, or the utility will be billing them direct. That's all to come. In some states, it's through the utility, and they get a green credit. In other states, it's a third-party management company, and then they're buying the power through them, even though it goes to the utility's lines. That is a conversation that will be finalized between legislators and utility over the next coming months.
Sounds complicated.
It is.
I, you know, I, I see in your materials that you're, that you want to provide at least a ten percent discount, and it says for Watertown customers in there. But...
Sorry about that.
So are you saying that your...
You have a lot of W's here.
Are you saying that your panels would be able to produce power at a lesser cost than our current WPS provider?
That is something that we'll investigate through the due diligence process. If we can't provide it, we won't build the project.
Okay.
And again, you have, in Wisconsin, you have multiple utilities, from Dairyland to Excel, to We Energies, to MG&E, to Alliant. Um, it's a very complicated puzzle here in the state, and we will have to understand which utilities are going to sign on and be supportive of legislation that allows customers to have access to lower-cost power. It's a big part of that process, yeah.
So if WPS says, we don't want anything to do with it, then that's going to be a big hindrance, or, or We Energies and another part of Wapaka, that sort of thing?
Yeah, and again, they, they'll have to then respond to, I guess, frustrated citizens and lack of investment capital that will go into these projects. A big part of these projects also is working with the Construction Business Group down in Madison, so both, uh, union and non-union labor can be a part of this process, and most importantly, it's built by Wisconsin members. Uh, the Wisconsin unions are very excited about, you know, jobs and skills training for the twenty-first century, and we are excited about that too, but if the utilities prevent those types of investments from taking place, then the jobs won't be created.
So it, let's just say hypothetically, the legislation all goes through, and, uh, the city were to approve this, this project. Are you, you identified a number of different sites. Are you looking for, like, an exclusive agreement with the city, or if another company were to come in and say, we want to build on one of those sites too? Is there competition available, or are you looking for an exclusive agreement? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, we would option. The, the plan would be to option that certain piece of land, that tax ID, or multiple tax IDs, and that would be our option to control until the project gets built, or we release, we lease the option from no legislation taking place, or we see the project doesn't allow us to save any money for individuals, then we won't build the project. The city will just have the freedom to then, at that point, contract whoever they would like. In, in the case of, let's say, the farmland site, um, continue to operate it as normal. If you want to grow crops on it, if you want to contract a farmer, do it for the next two to three years. When we get our permits in hand after sitting down with you for permitting, it's at that point that you'd engage with the landowner, or, see, not the landowner, but the farmer, and say, you know, in six months, we're going to have to have a shovel in the ground, so... Speaking of shovels in the ground, um, in the landfill case, we will be doing this purely on the cap, so this will not be puncturing the cap whatsoever. For your insight, that means that that project will have fixed solar panels, because they'll be on concrete ballast. Uh, if we were to build on the farmland site, and we can put posts in the ground, that would allow us to have trackers, which then will allow the panels to move with the sun. But we're expecting that all landfill projects are going to be fixed just based on the inability to puncture the cap. And again, we've done this in other parts of the country, and we're working with DNR on how we do this in other cities across the state.
Anybody else have any question? Go ahead, Colin.
Can you provide a, a list of other places you've done it? So we can research it on our own if we're interested?
Absolutely. Some project references, municipal references. Yep. We even have, we do have one municipality that would be willing to share the process that we've gone through with them here in the state, um, but the other municipalities are trying to not turn, like, upset the apple cart with their utility provider right now. Because this is a very contentious, I'm telling you right now, this is a contentious debate, really just between the utilities and everybody else in the state.
Again, we put this under discussion, so this is for you to ponder, and, uh, you'll see this at a future, future date for discussion approval, whatever you decide to do. And we appreciate you coming tonight, uh, sorry, Jeff. For us, you did a great job, actually, so appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate you guys as well. I appreciate the team here of Justin and Jared for, uh, making this forum open, and I appreciate the time.
Oh, 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 don't be careful.
I appreciate you guys' time. I really do. Um, the next steps for us was that we will share with the city an option to lease agreement that the city attorney can take a look at and just get feedback. Once that feedback comes back in, what we'll do is we'll set up a subsequent conversation if the city would like to move forward with the attorney's feedback on our program. Between now and then, we'll also provide references.
Oh, great. Thank you, Jeff. Safe, safe travel.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. You too. Speaking of Justin, he's the one that's prolonging this meeting tonight, so, um, we, next up, we have, uh...
Don't blame it on him. It's my fault.
Well, actually, yes, we can blame it on you.
Yeah, I know.
And Justin took it and moved forward with it. So, actually, this is just, uh, what I would say, the health of the recycling center, and so Justin is going to, um...
Yep.
Just tell us about what's, what's going on in our, in our recycling center. And maybe just to set this up, and maybe you already are going to do this, but, uh, remember that we are in collaboration with, uh, the four townships that surround us, the town of Lynn, the town of Wapaka, the town of Dayton, and, and the town of Farmington, and then the city of Wapaka. Uh, we do have, uh, the recycling center is in the city of Wapaka, but the, uh, the commission, the recycling commission actually rents that space from the city of Wapaka for a whopping one dollar per year with a hundred-year agreement. So, yeah. So, Justin, you want to go from there?
Yeah, you're stealing my thunder, so I could...
Oh, you were going to say that?
I was, I was.
Well, take that back, you guys.
So, uh, what's included in the packet, and Aaron will scroll along as I talk, um, this was our last recycling meeting agenda, and just to recap, the recycling commission is City Wapaka and the four surrounding townships, so Farmington, Dayton, uh, Lynn, and Town of Wapaka. Representative from each one of those municipalities gets one vote. Roger and myself are there as advisory. myself are there as advisory. And, you know, this fund has been set up a long time ago, and it was refreshed, I believe, in the 90s with a grant. And recycling is a losing game. We try to just, we try to, like, I guess, reduce our expenses just to keep it going as long as we can. The fund, we get help from Summit Accounting that helps with the bills, so they get a little bit for their work there. Aaron, could you scroll down to 204? So the big thing that we've looked at closely, so we've been diving into the budgets, into the accounts, and this is a detail, like, I asked Summit, like, a bunch of these questions on, like, what are these used for? So some of the answers, so we're kind of putting, looking at every last corner to make sure we're pinching every penny. The checking account balance as of the end of April was just a touch over $44,000. So, we're doing pretty good. A few years ago, it was at in the range of $65,000. And if you could keep going to the next page, Aaron, please. This is our typical budget. So I made one in April, which is unusual. We usually only review this, like, in September, our September meeting, because then it's like, we approve it, we bring it here, you guys approve it, and it gets adopted. Garbage tags, if you could zoom in, please, that's our biggest revenue and currently our biggest topic. So the city went to the sole-source pickup with GFL. Farmington went with, the Harders or GFL?
Harders.
Harders. Yes, thanks. Thanks for the assist, guys. And the Town of Wapaka is with GFL as well, so. So the three of the five are now getting pickups, so that kind of eliminates the need for these tags in those municipalities. The other two, Lynn and Dayton, do not have the pickup through a single source. And you can see the impact to it. We budgeted 25 grand or expecting that as a revenue. We're only a quarter of the way through. We're going to fall probably short of that. It's going to be maybe in the $15,000 to $20,000 range, so that's quite an impact. Past years before we all went to the sole-source, we saw revenue in this line item anywhere from, like, 30,000 to 35,000. So, there are other things we do out there, oil brush, paint, that sort of thing. You scroll down a little bit further, this is expenses. So there's a lot of items on here that we are looking at, we think are a little, maybe, I shouldn't say unnecessary, but maybe not quite as needed. Advertising, printing, postage, technology is helping with that. Contract services, you know, we have to hire out some things to get done, mainly it's the tub grinds, the big brush piles. And I guess I could go on and on and on, but that's not the point here. So we're looking at these things to reduce the expenses and keep this thing going. Bottom line is, we always anticipate quite a significant loss. So this one, which is just a draft, wasn't approved, showing a loss of almost $16,000. However, we've done a lot better than that because what we budget and how we do perform, we look at the year ending. And if you can keep scrolling, Aaron, please, you can pass this. Yeah, just go right past that. Keep going. Well, this is, this is like a proposed budget I just put together, like, another one come September, with a bunch of ideas of how we could increase revenues and reduce expenses again. So you can look at those. If you have any questions, let me know. Scroll a little bit more, please, sir. So this is, these are actuals. This is 19. And if you keep going down, that's 20. You can see we're in the black on a number of these just by a little bit. So we've been able to kind of, like, I would say, break even when you average these out over the years. So we're keeping that fund going because if the fund gets to zero, we have to decide what we're going to do there. Reassess all the municipalities. That doesn't seem, that's, well, probably not a very good option, but we need to keep the site going. We still have a need for the recycling center, even though we have the sole-source pickup here in the city, and so do the other two townships. The brush and leaves, oil, tires, if paint, if we don't accept those things, we anticipate those showing up in the ditch. Brush and leaves, there is a service there. City, especially the smaller lots, we don't have, or a lot of residents don't have room for this stuff. They bring it there for a pretty nominal fee. So I guess moving forward, the one idea that has came, I guess, apparent with the last meeting during discussion, well, how do we differentiate from the municipalities that are doing the sole-source pickup versus the ones who are not? And, you know, if we have to adjust services, like, who's going to pay for what? The one solution that came up, the one idea, was, well, if we increase the bag tag taxes, or bag tag cost to purchase, that would make up that revenue loss. So the two municipalities that need the bag tags will just pay for more, and they pay for those additional services that are at the recycling center. The municipalities that don't need it, well, then they're not paying for those services twice. So it seems like a pretty good trade-off moving forward. So I know there's, I've heard some things about, we're going to shut the site down. That's not in the cards, that's not the plan. We want to keep it open, keep it open as long as we can, and definitely do not want to just assess for additional to keep it going. So I guess that is the state of that committee.
Yeah. I'm not sure if anybody else has any questions. If you said this, I didn't hear it, but what is our, what is the recycling center's current cash balance?
As the end of April, it was $44,500-ish.
So the anticipation is that you will probably use all that up, or you're going to reduce your expenses and you think you'll have a cash balance at the end of the year?
Right. So the latter. So, like I said, we put these budgets together. They usually show us going in the red. We've been doing a good job of getting a little bit more on our revenues than what we anticipate, and being mindful of our expenses, so they've been balancing out. If we just do simple math and say, "Our budget's going to show a $15,000 loss," well, that means that fund is dried up in three years. However, that hasn't been the historical trends. We've been close to breaking even when we average it out, sometimes being well into the black of a few thousand. So making money.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is, I don't know how many years it's been since the city has had to participate, or the townships had to participate in paying into this fund. It's actually been increasing cash value until this last year here. So it's been good. Anybody else?
Just a quick clarification question, Justin. So I know, you said we've been in the black for a number of years, dating back to 2019 in the packet, but it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's probably true that we can expect that trend, the actuals, to not really reflect that anymore because of the increased pickup service and the decreased revenue from bag tag, or from the garbage bags?
Not necessarily. So, so the bag tag revenue has gone down, but the cost to have somebody get that garbage and haul it to a landfill has also gone down. So it's kind of balanced out. We used to have, I think it was five or six large dumpsters out there for the bag tags. Now we're down to, like, two. So we're, we contract with a different provider to come get those bags and bring them to a landfill, and that costs us, but that pickup has reduced significantly. So that has kind of balanced out. Most of the recyclers that do get hauled away don't really give us much revenue. So even though, like, less tin cans are going there, or papers going there, they're not major revenue generators. The stuff that is revenue generators is like the aluminum cans and the scrap iron, which we do accept, and we make revenues on that. And you can't put the, you can put aluminum in your garbage tote, but the scrap iron, you can't. So, so really, there's been an effect, but it's been kind of a, while the revenues have gone down, the expenses have gone down with it because we need less pickup at that site, we're getting charged less to do that, so.
Well, okay, and so the big one, of course, is the contract services. I'm trying to remember back on this financial, it's been a while since I've gone through this, but, so the contract services is actually the garbage pickup, you know, and so they budgeted $14,000 on $25,000 worth of income. And you can see that through April, we're, you know, we're less than $2,000. So there's quite a savings there. But of course, we only have about $5,000 in revenue there, too. So you're netting about $3,000. So the bag tag thing is still working, just not at a higher rate.
Correct.
My other comment, which is the main comment I was going to make here, is that it seems to me like the only reduction in expenses that you are going to see is in, like, equipment rental, city payroll, and maybe some site payroll unless you do it. But the equipment rental and the city payroll then would actually affect, affect, effect, affect. We've been having this discussion for about two weeks here. So it would have, would have an effect on the public works budget, because that money goes to the public works department to offset expenses.
It goes back to the general fund, in general.
Okay. But it does affect our budget.
Correct.
If we do reduce those things. So we kind of get hurt by this. And, again, not hogging, but I just want to ask this question. I asked this question before, so I know the answer, but I'm just going to say it here. We do other things in the recycling, the city does other things at that recycling center. We actually allow city residents, which are great, they should be allowed to do that, but we also allow townships to bring their leaves and brush to the center at no fee at all. So has there been any thought?
No, brush is five bucks a load.
Okay, but leaves are free?
Yes.
Okay. So has there been any thought about maybe charging the townships for bringing their leaves into our, to help?
Those, yeah, so those types of ideas have been bounced around. But again, it's an agreement between the five, and we're all in agreement. So to say, "We're going to charge the towns different from the city," or from the city, doesn't seem right, to charge the towns that are not in the sole-source pickup versus the ones who are in. That was a lot of discussion this last one, and that's where it went to the bag tags, because, well, everybody needs leaf and brush pickup services as well, or not pickup, but drop-off services. So, yeah, it's been discussed.
Okay. Well, who said we had to be fair? Henry, did you get any indication, Justin, if the bag tag went to five, six bucks, or Lynn and Town of Wapaka, that that might steer them to move the way we have with trash? Get any indication?
But don't say Town of Wapaka. They are, they have a service.
Lynn and Dayton do not have a contract with a provider.
Do, did you get any indication from their representatives that there's just, you know, a line that's going to, well, if we get six, seven bucks a bag tag, we're going to have to offer pickup to our residents?
No, no, that wasn't discussed.
Did you get any?
No.
Although, we, from what we understand is, is the Town of Dayton was totally against it, and now they seem like they're willing to listen. But we're not sure yet. But we, you know, you got to guess that Town of Lynn is an absolute no. But who knows? They have a whole different, you know, they have supervisors, they're all, what do they call them? Town Board. Their town board is completely different than it was before. So who knows? If we make that presentation to them, they might be willing to do that. So, good comment. Colin, does that answer, I know you probably know better than anybody because you're on that commission.
Well, this, yeah, I am on the commission. I was a little concerned, Justin had brought up the point that, my concern was the bag tag revenue was obviously going down, but of course, this cost's going down with it. And so my concern was, things might have to change there because revenues were changing and whatnot. And my concern as a representative of this body was what people and your constituents care about in regards to that facility and what they're looking for, and what we should maintain as services, and what might be on the table if revenues pan out to such a way where it's so far in the black, we have to subsidize it somehow. So that's part of the reason I had mentioned this to both the mayor and, well, everybody, and wanted some feedback. And Justin gave a great, but if there's something that other people are thinking about is important, go ahead, Justin.
Right. Oh, I didn't want to interrupt, but, so there is a provision in the agreement that any of the municipalities can get out. It takes an 18-month notice before you're out, and that was, a number of the municipalities were strongly considering that until we kind of worked through this last meeting. And kind of, there's really no benefit of getting out at this point. And we worked through, like I said, all the options with revenues and expenses. The fund is healthy, it's still okay, it's still working as is. The negative of a town or the city, well, the city owns the property, but if the town gets out, then those residents can't use this site anymore for anything. So that's a big negative. So I think there was a concern at one point that there may be one or two that would come up and say, "We want to get out," that I think has completely subsided.
Well, I think it's important to note, too, that this is for convenience purposes. We do have a Wapaka County Recycling Center, which is over by Manawha. So we are following the recycling rules in the state of Wisconsin, but the four townships and the city felt that it would be really nice to have a recycling center in our community, and I think most of us, until it starts costing us money, it probably makes good sense. So, thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
You're welcome, guys. If you have any other questions, just let me know.
So it's partially your fault, Colin. Justin just collaborated more.
Thanks, Colin.
Yeah. All right. So, next up, communications recommendations of the mayor. I just want to remind you that, obviously, our next meeting was to be held on July 4th, which is, which, you know, obviously is a holiday. And so we are actually going to cancel that meeting, and so we will not meet again until July 18th. I do have to say, though, with a little bit of a warning, it could be subject to call. But we all know that in place of that July 4th council meeting, we are going to have a strategic plan reboot. And I don't know how that gets to be called Justin's office, but we're going to have it next to the recycling center, which we're going to do on July 11th from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and then on July 12th from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And I know some of you, council members, this might be tough for you to attend. We would appreciate, if you are unable to attend, let us know as soon as possible that you're unable to attend. Otherwise, we'll expect all of you to be there. Okay? And, you know, I think it was the radio station, I always call it WDX, but Lakes, 92.7 Lakes, did a report on the strategic plan that we're going to do, and they listed a number of things that were in the previous strategic plan back in 2019 and that we have completed. And it was, it was pretty cool. So we'll probably start out our meeting with that, because that will get you fired up to know that we are successful. We're not just doing this to make staffs into another meeting. Okay. Old Brewers?
Move to adjourn.
Action by Hagan, second by Henry Valenker, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Have a great night, everybody. It is 8:12.